I want to welcome you on coming out in this cold, wintry night of January 17, 2018. I'd like you to all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and to remain standing and to remember all those serving across the world. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Why am I so tired?
It's the weather.
Well, there was a therapy before. I'm like, oh, yeah. Once again, good evening, everyone, and thank you for attending the Village Woodbury Planning Board Meeting of January 17, 2018. I'd like to introduce the board and our consultants. To my right, we have Robert Anzalone; to my left, Sandra Capiglioni; Chris Giabelli; our Secretary Gail Nogal; all the way at the far table, our engineer Dennis; Jonathan, our planner; Rick, our attorney; and Stacy, our telecommunications consultant. And I'm Maria Hunter, your chairperson. Board members, we have minutes from December 20. Do I have a motion to accept?
I make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye abstain. I wasn't here.
Real brief. Rick, we were given a copy of the law. This is in regards to the request from NP and V's letter from September 19 regarding the aquifer protection. And we have a local law. I guess there's going to be a public hearing in February with the village board. I need the consultants to review it. Board members, do you have any thoughts or concerns about it? I forgot when they're having their meetings. We have our meeting in February. Their meeting will be after ours, so I have to make sure everyone got a copy of it. I think your office got one, Jonathan?
Just to, so you understand the process, Dennis and I have been working with David Gordon of the village board's attorney on this through the whole process, designing, you know, what would go into this ordinance. We've reviewed the product as David has developed drafts.
Okay.
And we're both very, we've become familiar with it, so, you know, we can, and it's on the agenda for the board to discuss, we can work with you on that.
Okay. Being that we only received this today, I guess, board members, I would ask that you review it. It's a nice little law. I started to review it earlier. And as Jonathan stated, that Mr. Gordon has been working with Dennis and himself to put this together, and this is something that we need to be amended on the quality, water quality protection overlay district. And as our attorney, I always ask our attorney to review it as well, if there's any legal opinions that he let us know in the village as well.
Yeah, I haven't seen it before, so.
Okay. Like I said, we just got it, it was just given to us today, so I just asked that you take a look at that as well. And we can discuss this, Dennis, after our next meeting.
I'll put it on the agenda.
As Sandy stated, we had a memo regarding Mercedes-Benz requests about the curbing. I spoke with Dennis and I told him that as a field change, I was comfortable with that, so we went ahead with that, just to let the board members know. And then, as you know, we received from H2M on January 8 memo to Langton Tully regarding 83 Millvale Lane. I do have concerns about that, so as Dennis briefly mentioned before, it's up to the applicant to come back to us. I know it's out of our purview, but I would, I'm sure it'll be in the minutes and that the building inspector is well aware of this memo and that he'll take whatever corrective actions are needed.
Right now, they don't have an approved plan until you sign it, so the ball is in their court. They can either amend the plan to one that agrees with what you approved, or they can come back to the board for an amendment.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Anything else before I carry on with the regular agenda? The first item on the agenda is Mobility. Review draft resolution for the placement of small cell site attached to existing utility pole located at Turner Road and Corporate Drive in Central Valley. The utility pole is located adjacent to the property known on the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps as Section 226, Block 1, Lot 88. Representative here for Mobility, please come up to the podium. You were given a copy of the, did you see a copy of the resolution?
No, I didn't have.
If you don't mind, I mean, you have another one? I apologize for that.
No problem.
Or Dennis has an extra one, or Sandy? You can just state your name for the record, so the public knows who you are?
Sure. Paul Costa from Mobility.
All right. So we're here for this review of the draft resolution. Stacy, as our consultant for, could you please have any comments or thoughts on this?
Mike Musso and I reviewed the draft resolution yesterday and this morning and provided comments to the attorney's office. The one thing I will note is Paul has now provided the utility pole number that should be added to the resolution. So it's utility pole number 55761/48134, which would be identifying that particular pole in that intersection.
Oh, I must have wrote it wrong. So it's 55761, not 3?
No, 63, yeah. You got it right.
Okay, so it's 55763/48134?
Correct.
Okay. Perfect. Anything else about, I can go through the resolution. Paul, if you're, if the board so desires, unless my other consultants have any thoughts or concerns about this, we'll go through it and.
Okay.
I guess no other thoughts or concerns from the board members, consultants? Board members, what's your pleasure? Want me to read the draft resolution of approval?
Yes.
Okay. My only thoughts on the cover page where it says at Turner Road, should we put the pole numbers there and say at Turner Road and Corporate Drive intersection, or so it's a little more clearer? Rick, your thoughts?
I think that sounds good. Let me just get this set up to go ahead and make the changes on the fly.
All right.
And Corporate Road Intersection.
Corporate Drive, excuse me.
No, Drive, you're right.
Yeah, because it's within the first paragraph.
You didn't want the pole number there, too?
The pole number should be somewhere. I'm not sure where he would, it'd probably be.
We can put it in nature of.
Nature of application?
Orange and Rockland, 45-foot wooden pole.
And then you could put the numbers in right there?
Yeah.
In parentheses, okay.
What was the number again?
All right, so board members, where it says Orange and Rockland, 45-foot wooden utility pole, somehow we'll insert utility pole numbers and we'll, so it's clear. And then, this is property involved. This is the property affected by this resolution is a Village of Woodbury roadway, known as Turner Road. The pole is not in the roadway. It's in the right-of-way.
Right-of-way for the roadway.
Right, but that's part of the village's roadway.
All right, so it should say right-of-way, or?
We can, we can put Village of Woodbury Roadway, Right-of-way if.
R-O-W, okay. Because I know the applicant was before the village board and they haven't made a determination as yet, so, but we'll get into that later.
That's correct.
All right. Usually, I start with, I want to go to findings on page five. Excuse me? I'm switching it up because I had something highlighted with a question mark. I do read these. The findings, in the first paragraph, this, it says, the middle, the third sentence, it says, "Proposed action involves the construction of a new wireless telecommunications facility." I'm just questioning, this isn't a facility per se, but it's in addition to a utility pole. Is this, I'm just having a problem.
It's how the.
Rick?
The reason that I had put it that way is the definition in your code for a wireless telecommunication facility is very broad, and we believe that it fits within that very broad definition.
Okay. I just had a question on that.
Are you comfortable with that?
I guess you're going to say the same thing, Jonathan?
What I was going to say is, if you read the definition in the land use code, or the zoning code, it is a wireless telecommunications facility, just a small one.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure.
And the definition could be a tower that's hundreds of feet high, or it could be a little thing that's on a pole.
I had a problem.
Either way.
All right, so then we're going to go to resolution of approval, page six, specific conditions. Paul, as I go along, if you have any questions, just, once I read that, each individual section, you can have a question, or you can, please stop, okay? Stop me. Number one, pursuant to the Village of Woodbury Code subsection 310-38, in parentheses, P1 through 4, the applicant or its successors and assigns must apply for recertification of this special permit every five years commencing with a recertification date of June 1, 2018, or the permit shall cease to exist. Such recertification must be made between 12 to six months prior to the expiration of the recertification. The applicant's certification is occurring less than one year prior to June, to a June 1 recertification date. The planning board may therefore, upon request by the permit holder and recommendation of the village engineer and building inspector, allow the recertification to occur on the next following recertification date. Two, prior to the.
Maria?
Yes, sir.
As Stacy had said, we had gotten some proposed modifications this morning, and so what we'll do is, we'll, I don't think those were passed on to you, because it's not a practice normally to keep giving modified resolutions to you to not cause confusion. But the, so I'll go over the changes suggested by Stacy. And the first one is, in that first paragraph, she was, made a query about whether or not the June 1, 2018 date was too soon. Is it possible that the facility may not be constructed by then? Maybe have it as a later date.
Did we put something into effect that we wanted all certifications?
My recollection, my recollection was that we were, it was difficult to track all the recertifications, so we were going to have one date for recertification of all the towers.
Stacy's basically saying, should we use 2019 rather than 2018?
We can.
It's up, it's up to the board. It's just, it was a suggestion by Stacy, if you want to weigh in more.
No, and I think that might be a question for Mobility to see if it can even be, have a building permit and be constructed before June of this year.
Yeah, I mean, we anticipate that, I mean, depending on how long the building permit would take, but we are looking at potentially building this in March or April, depending on what other permits we need from the.
Right, and also depends on the village board getting back pertaining to number 19.
And if we leave it at June 1, 2018, and it misses that date, that recertification won't happen for another five years thereafter, so it's not going to be. And if it's brand-new, I don't know that that really matters, if we make it five years and two months, so. Whatever's the pleasure of the board. If you make it June 1, 2019, then the next recertification will be five years thereafter. If you make it 2018, it will be five years from June 1, 2018.
Right, the chance might not, it might not be done. We can go at the 19th? We'll stay with the 18th? What do you, Robert?
Well, are all the other towers up for recertification this June?
Well, we're going to try and.
Yeah.
As they come up, we're asking the building department to start doing them on June 1 of every, and then they can go from there.
Right, right.
So they don't, it doesn't pertain to them right now, just to this.
Well, then, then 2019 is all right with me.
Yeah, I have, I have no problem with 2019.
I'm fine with it.
You were fine with that? Chris?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, so we can change that to 2019? Anything else with number one?
No.
Nope. Okay. Two, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant must have submitted, must have submitted, delete the second word, submit?
Submit, yes.
A performance and removal bond in the amount of $15,000. Three, Mobility LLC shall be jointly and separately responsible to the greatest extent allowed by law for compliance with the terms of this special permit and for the safe and proper maintenance of the site at all times. Four, prior.
And then Stacy had suggested, Stacy had suggested adding the following sentence, "The applicant maintains full responsibility for the accuracy and adequacy of all aspects of the small cell design and structural and foundation analysis, and for the construction and maintenance of the facility."
Board members, you need it restated?
I'll read it one more time.
Thank you.
Although probably should be plural analyses. "The applicant maintains full responsibility for the accuracy and adequacy of all aspects of the small cell design and structural and foundation analyses, and for the construction and maintenance of the facility."
Board members, you okay with that?
Good. Sorry, what would foundational analysis be defined as? I mean, it's not our poll, we don't, we, I'm poured the foundation, we're attaching to it, so just trying to understand what we would be agreeing to as far as that.
Yeah, but you'd need to make sure that the additional equipment that you're adding to the poll can be handled by that.
Yeah.
Existing foundation.
Oh, yeah, we've worked out.
Just like a co-location has to certify that the, what is, the tower that it's on, it's structurally sound to add that other co-location.
We're good on number three now?
Mm-hmm.
Number four, prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall update the Village of Woodbury Building Department's records with the name, address, and telephone number of the current emergency contact person for Mobility LLC, who must be available on a 24-hour basis for purposes of notification regarding code and resolution compliance, and for emergency and maintenance purposes.
Maria, we also suggested here to add in the utility pole number again, just to say that it's Orange and Rockland Utility Pole Number 55763-48134.
Okay, makes sense. Board members, you're okay with that?
Yes. Yes.
Five, "The use and performance of the applicant's antennas and equipment approved herein shall be accomplished in such a manner so as best not to interfere with any emergency services, communications within the Village of Woodbury. The applicant finding itself and its successors and assigns agrees that in the event that its operations or equipment approved by this resolution interferes with any emergency communication systems, that it will fully cooperate with the village to identify said interference. The failure to correct any interference issue shall require that the applicant or its successors or assigns be directed to appear before the planning board for further discussion and possible modification and/or verification of this special permit consistent with applicable federal law." Six, "The applicant must maintain at its own expense all permits and licenses required by applicable rules, regulations, or laws, and said permits and licenses must be maintained in full force and effect for as long as required by the village or other government entity or agency having jurisdiction over the applicant as required on the Village Code subsection 310-38 subsection D, number 19. Seven, "As required by Village Code subsection 310-38D, number 24, the applicant shall notify the board of any intended modification of the wireless telecommunications facility, including the replacement of or any change to the applicant's antennas and/or ground equipment or other routine maintenance, and shall reapply to the board prior to performing any such modification, replacement, and/or change." Is it the board or the building inspector?
I think that the language is consistent with the code right now, but if the village does look to redo the code for a revised process for small cells, that might change in the future.
Okay. Number eight, "Any bonds or insurances required under the Village Code must be to the satisfaction of the village engineer and planning board attorney, and such bonds and/or insurance, if any, must be maintained in full force and effect for the duration of the special Nine, "The village reserves the authority to inspect the wireless telecommunications facilities in order to verify that the holder of the special permit and any and all leases, renters, and/or licenses place and construct such facilities, including towers and antennas, in accordance with all the applicable technical safety, fire, building, and zoning codes, laws, ordinances, and regulations, and other applicable requirements as permitted on the Village Code subsection 310-38, letter T." Ten, "The applicant shall annually, from the date that this fully executed resolution is filed with the village clerk, certify in writing to the village and that N-I-E-R levels at the site are within the threshold limits adopted by the FCC as required by Village Code subsection 310-38, letter U." Eleven, "After installation and prior to receiving a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall furnish written certification to the satisfaction of the village building inspector that the wireless telecommunications facilities are grounded and bonded so as to protect persons and property, and installed with appropriate surge protectors as required by Village Code subsection 310-38, letter D, number 26. Twelve, "Prior to the signing of the final plans, the applicant must furnish written certification that the telecommunications facility, foundation, and attachments are designed and will be constructed as built to meet all federal, state, county, and local structural requirements for loads, including wind and ice loads, as required by Village Code subsection 310-38, letter G, number nine. Thirteen, "Prior to the signing of the final plans, the applicant shall submit written certification that the proposed equipment are the minimum technologically required to provide service within the village as required by Village Code subsection 310-38, letter F, number three. Fourteen, "The applicant must maintain the minimum required balance and escrow to cover all fees and expenses incurred until after the issuance of a certificate of occupancy." Fifteen, "Any ground disturbance surrounding the base of the tower that may result from the installation of the applicant's tower extension, antenna, and/or ground equipment must be restored to its prior condition, except for the installation of any new equipment authorized by this resolution of approval to the satisfaction of the building inspector prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy."
Yeah, we have one change in that paragraph, to change the word "tower" to "utility pole" in both locations. So read, "Any ground disturbance surrounding the base of the utility pole that may result from the application of the applicant's utility pole extension, antennas, and other equipment, instead of and/or ground equipment, must be restored to the prior condition."
Board members, you're okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
What was that? I thought I.
Just saying, I think that's a good change.
Okay. Sixteen, "All requirements of the board's telecommunications consultant as outlined in its reports to the planning board, and any other reasonable requirements of said consultant are to be completed to the satisfaction of said consultant prior to the issuance of a building permit with correspondence of such satisfaction filed with the village building inspector." Seventeen, "Prior to the signing of the final plans, the applicant shall submit a signed full EAF Part 1 that has been amended to meet all requirements of the board's engineering consultant as outlined in his reports to the planning board."
We had done that. We already submitted the EAF.
Didn't satisfy.
Didn't?
No, I said, then the condition is satisfied.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Number eighteen, "The visible portions of the proposed small cell equipment shall be either tan or gray and color matched to the existing wooden utility pole color."
We'd like to add a sentence there.
Sure.
Non-reflective paint coating, matte finish should be used, or shall be used for
One more time.
And could we change the tan to brown? The color we're using is closer to a brown than the tan.
Do we have any problem with the color?
No, I think that's fine, as long as it matches the existing utility pole, that's the.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, it'll be brown, okay. All right, so just read that sentence again, Rick. Non-reflecting paint coating?
Yeah, it'd be an added sentence that says, "Non-reflective paint slash coating, parentheses, matted finish," closed parentheses, "shall be used for the equipment." So we'd read in real time. Non-reflective paint coating, matted finish, shall be used for the equipment.
Board members, you're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Nineteen, "Prior to the signing of the plans, the applicant shall provide to the building department a signed owner's endorsement from the Village of Woodbury, allowing the small cell to be located on a structure within the village's right-of-way."
So that's the board's approval, then?
So.
Village Board's approval.
Village Board.
We'll need, okay.
Because right now, you're before the village board. You were there last week.
Yeah, so they would need.
So once they make their determination, then the building department will.
That's a condition of signing the plans.
Right, that's before I can sign the plans, the village board has to make their decision.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, sure.
Does the board want me to put in Village of Woodbury Board of Trustees, or are you satisfied with it?
Let's be, let's say Village of Woodbury Board of Trustees, just so it's clear. Twenty, "Prior to the signing of the plans, the applicant shall comply with the memorandum of the village engineer dated December 15, 2017, to the satisfaction of the village Any other deletions, or additions, or corrections, or from my consultants? Okay, Paul, you understand everything with the changes we've read in here?
Uh-huh.
Okay, board members, do I have a motion to accept with the additional language as was added in here, and?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Have a good night.
So our next step is to get a final plan signed by you after.
Right, you'll have to satisfy all the.
Satisfy all those conditions and then.
Yep, and then once that's done and the village board makes their determination, Gary will let you know when I can, he'll let me know, or, I mean, Dennis will let me know when I can sign the final plans.
Okay.
All right?
Yeah, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
You too.
I just got my fingers stuck in here. Next item on the agenda, Pomona Enterprises, "Review and discuss ARB application for proposed single-family home located within the Woodbury Villas subdivision. Said property is located at 18 Hudson Point and is known on the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps as Section 255, Block 3, Lot 9." Anyone here for the applicant?
I am.
And you can come up, and do you have a copy of the?
I'm going to make a concession.
You're going to make a concession?
Yes. I think they concede on first place. Wait for the other.
Oh, so you want me to go there? Okay. Board members, you all right with that?
Yes.
This will be item number two. And then we're going to go to Mr. Pulver. You're going to be item number one. Let me get my file out. Okay. Who's going to come up to the podium and speak?
Good evening, everyone.
Is the microphone on?
I'm here with Seth Pulver, the applicant, here with Larry Toro, our project engineer. This is an application for site plan and a special use permit for property located on Castleton Drive, section two-oh-two, block one, lots seventy and seventy-nine, and it's an application to establish a farm winery as defined in your code. I've reviewed the engineer's comments, it looks like that we're, we certainly meet all the bulk requirements, and we're permitted use within the zone. There is one special requirement, under your special permit requirements, that we access off of Route thirty-two, and we're very close, but we're not quite there. So as noted by Mr. Lindsay, we're in the report, we will need a variance to allow access off of Quaker, Quaker Road? Quaker Road, which is approximately, we're arguing between two-hundred-and-fifty and four-hundred feet from where our entrance would be onto the property. So I can answer any other questions, or fill you in, or Mr. Toro can give you some details?
I'm just, I'm just looking at, just so that, just bear with me for a second. So the zoning district for this, Dennis, is what?
This is in the R-one-A zone.
R-one-A zone.
And when you go to the R-one-A zone, can we refer to the-
Do you have a microphone? Microphone, the heat just came on behind me.
If you look in the R-one-A zone, they allow a number of uses that are permitted in the R-three-A zone, and this is one of the uses that's permitted in the R-one-A zone.
All right, then with that, because it wasn't on the application, that's why I wanted to be clear that what the zoning was. I'm unsure as to why we have the county LLC form. Nowhere on the application does it say LLC. Mr. Pulver is the applicant, and Nadine Pulver is the property owner. And we're calling this, and the project name is being called, it says, "Proposed Project Winery slash Vineyard Farm," but the title of the project is being called Rushmore Winery. So why is it saying Rushmore Winery with a hundred percent Seth Pulver? They don't, they don't jive, they need to be corrected.
Well, at some, at some point, the business will be run by the LLC. So through, it sounds to me like through an abundance of caution, we're disclosing all of the entities that may be, that may be involved in this. Ultimately, when the business is open, it will be run as an LLC.
Are you the sole member?
Yes. And Mr. Pulver is the sole member of that LLC. So I'm assuming that's, I didn't prepare the papers, but I'm assuming that's why it came in.
Okay.
So there's no, we want everything on the table here, so.
Okay, as long as it's-
LLC.
Huh?
Is there a name for the LLC?
Well, on here it says, the project, title of the project is Rushmore Winery, but it doesn't say what the LLC is.
Rushmore Estate? Rushmore Estate, I'm sorry.
Rushmore Estate is the LLC name.
So, all right.
Just Rushmore Estate.
All right, with that being, all right, because I want to go forward, just one name on this file. On the app, on our agenda, we say Pulver. Are we gonna call this Rushmore Winery or Rushmore Estate? What are we gonna call this? I want one name going forward.
Mr. Pulver is named as the applicant, but we can sub, if you want it under the name of the LLC, we can-
You want to be Rushmore Winery? Is that the name going to be eventually?
Farm Winery, Rushmore State Farm and Winery.
Rushmore State Farm and, and Winery?
Correct. But the LLC that's formed already is Rushmore Estate LLC.
Okay.
So it'll be a DBA.
Right.
All right. For all intent purposes to make my life easier, I would like all consultants, attorneys, and board members to refer to this as the Rushmore Farm and Winery. Or Rushmore Estate, yeah, Rushmore Estate Farm and Winery.
Ampersand or ANZ? Ampersand.
No, no, I want to be careful, is this, we're not being funny here.
No, Ampersand.
Ampersand, okay, beautiful. All right, so now I cleared that up on my end, I'm good with that.
Get the old stuff.
No, it, because it gets to be crazy once, because on the, because the EAF says Rushmore State Farm and Winery, so I want to make sure we go along correctly all the way across. And with that being said, we have the short EAF, and it does say Rushmore State Farm and Winery, beautiful. The county was sent out on December twenty-seventh to the Department of Planning and the Department of Public Works, so that, that was done. You didn't bring any little, all right, we won't go into the maps right now. All right, I'm gonna jump over to now our engineer, and I'll, I'll explain to you later, Jonathan, why we did this the way we did, all right?
Okay, under zoning, the applicant has provided a table, and maybe, just so there's no confusion, they identified the bulk requirements, they said the R-three-A zone, it's the same, it's the, they are in the R-one-A zone. And there was a typo in there, I think, for the minimum required rear yard setback, they had forty feet, it's, I believe, actually a hundred. But I think they can comply. The area of non-compliance, I don't think it's in the special permit conditions, it's in the requirements of the code, is that they have to have direct access thirty-two, they've already identified that they don't, so the only action that this board can take at this time would be a referral to the ZBA. But they have provided you with plans, so since we're here, I guess we can talk about the other things. As far as the structures, there is a requirement in your code where there are structures of local or national historic significance that the, any structures they build should be compatible with those. In my opinion, the Rushmore Estate is at least of local significance. They have indicated that they're gonna build a four-thousand-square-foot building, which is gonna have the wine-making and the wine tasting areas. They haven't yet provided details on that, they're gonna have to go to the ZBA, so I guess they can hold for that, but when they come back, and when they return, they would want to show you what that structure is so that you can make a determination of whether, in fact, that is compatible with the existing uses. As far as the site plan, they have provided you with general information on the circulation on the plan. We've made some comments on that in terms of the parking, the parking's gonna be a gravelled area. This is similar to what the Pelagi Farm Winery did, but when we had that before you, you asked them to put, in that case, I think they put down railroad ties, and they, they put little marks on the railroad ties, sort of to indicate where people are supposed to park. You could do it that way, you could do it with poles, you could do it anyway, but if you leave an open area which is just gravelled and can't be striped, you may get haphazard parking, some people may pull head in, some people may parallel park. I don't know if this is gonna be as successful as Pelagi has been sometimes. Pelagi had some festivals down there, so they needed all their parking, and they needed people to park efficiently. So they should provide something in there, any reasonable way of providing parking would be good. We made some comments about the access to the structure. They don't have any walkways or any driveways up to the building. Depends how their processing goes, whether they're gonna need a driveway, they'll certainly need some kind of a walkway for patrons if that's where their wine tasting is. Should be a smooth surface, the people are gonna be coming out after doing a lot of tasting, so they should be safe. Ice House Road is a private road, it's noted as such. When the Rushmore Festival was run here years ago, the people on Ice House Road came out and were concerned about the condition of Ice House Road, the ability for it to serve for, at that time it was a, was a play-type of thing they were doing. I can expect that you might have some of those residents come out and be concerned about that, so I think that they ought to do an evaluation of Ice House Road, its condition, and its ability to serve the additional use here, the additional capacity. And in that vein, I think it was resolved at the meeting, I mean, this was back probably in the early nineties, that Rushmore State had the authority to use it for the Rushmore Festival, but I, I don't recall now how that was demonstrated, and they may need to submit something for Rick's satisfaction, that whatever access rights they have over that private road would extend to having a winery, not just the residents on that property. Water and sewer-
Dennis, just once, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Currently, Ice House, Ice House Road is owned by Mr. Pulver. With the residents that live there, they must have easements to use that road, correct? I just want to be-
I'm not sure, it's a private road, it shows it's on their property, I don't know what rights exist, and who has what authority over that road. Maybe Mr. Pulver has that, has full rights, and he extends those rights to the adjacent properties, but I'm not, I don't recall that.
All right, I would, I would like to see that in the future.
Yeah, I checked the deeds as much, as many as I could today with the various properties. I was looking to see if there was a recorded road maintenance agreement, there isn't. The deeds-
There isn't?
There is not.
It's gone.
The deeds basically have a one-line sentence in the description saying, "Together with the right to use Ice House, this private road, in common with the others." And that's, that line is also included in Mr. Pulver's deed, so he owns, it's subject to the rights of others to use the road, but that's it. I mean, there's nothing more explaining how it works, apparently it's worked over the years, I think one deed went back to the eighties, so apparently it works, and we're going to look into this before we go to the ZBA to come up with a plan.
Perfect, yeah, yeah, that's great.
Yes.
All right, I'm sorry, Dennis.
That's fine. Give me a chance to take a look at the memo. Water and sewer, they've indicated they're going to be using public water and sewer. I don't know how they're tapping in, how they're gonna run around, so they can provide a little information, and where the public facilities will be located. Under stormwater, we're an MS-four community, they're, they'll at least have to comply with the requirements for the general permit for construction activities, I think because of the size, but they should provide some information. Most of this, it's a very small building, four-thousand square foot, square feet, with a gravelled area, I don't expect stormwater management to be a significant problem, although they are gonna clear a lot of land. It looks like the vineyard area right now is a wooded area, and to make that into a vineyard, I assume there's a clearing in there, and then we'll have to make sure that they address at least soil erosion and sediment control on that. As far as landscaping and lighting, there should be some lighting, certainly if they're gonna have the wine tasting at this time of the year, in the evening, it'll be dark early, so there should be some lighting for the patrons, but not, this is a residential area, they certainly don't want to have it that extensive, or run that late in the night, that it would be obtrusive. As far as signs, I don't know what they're gonna do for signage, and to try to make sure that people can get directed to the proper location, you can have small signs on their own property, but they're only directional signs. If they have a large sign at the entrance, that would need approval, and that would be something that, you know, might be subject to some public concern in terms of its location. But people are gonna have to know how to get here. Architectural review, again, I already mentioned the fact that that four-thousand-square-foot building should be provided to you in terms of the nature of the construction, and so you can make sure that it's compatible with the area. We made some comments on the EAF, I'm not gonna bore you with those, but I think the applicant should take a look at those, and make sure that they have the proper answers in the EAF form. As far as ESOs, this is, it's a small application, I think, for ESO, but I think it's where the access is, and the fact that someone may get injured on this, on the property, you should be sure that, you know, it's satisfactory, at least for the ambulance corps and others. So you may want to have a referral over to the ESOs, see if they have any comments on And I think that's it, there are a couple other comments in the report that I haven't gone over, but I'm sure that their engineer will take a look at that before they come back, and provide some information on the plans. And unless you have any other questions, that's all I have.
No, that's good. Also, Mr. Myrow, with the private road, just need to confirm the width, usually the fire department maintains a sixteen-foot wide in prior, I'm not sure how, this being, and access in and out, I'm not sure, like, I know in other prior applications, I know, Dennis, we had what's called bumpouts, where people can pull over if the road isn't wide enough, but that's something for the future to think of. I know I did this a little differently, I didn't send this to your office, Jonathan, sorry, Sandy, because I knew this was potential going to the ZBA for the, for access. I didn't want to do too much studying until they went to the ZBA and came back, so don't be insulted.
No, we, we'll do our, our planning review, if they're successful at ZBA, we'll, we'll make comment on the plan there.
Okay, that's-
But you could still start the seeker process at this point.
Right, correct, the seeker process, which would be a type-one action.
No.
No, I think unlisted.
You change that.
Well, I'll-
Well, I'll let Rick, go ahead, Rick, because, go ahead, you, go ahead.
Okay. First, they submitted a short-form EAF, the question is whether or not the board wants a long-form EAF with respect to this project, so you should make that determination. Secondly, it should be typed as unlisted. It is by one square foot, too large, should be a type-two action under seeker. Your code requires a four-thousand-square-foot code, and type-two actions are less than four-thousand square feet. So I suggest that-
Stacy, excuse me, everyone, Stacy? You don't have to stay for this, I'm sorry, you, you can go home, I'm sorry about that. Okay, Rick, go ahead.
She's fascinated by all of this.
I know, she is, I, I just realized, I have you still sitting there, I'm sorry.
I'm in the middle of my-
Go ahead, Rick, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
That's all, so I, I think that it should be typed as an unlisted action under seeker, and I think that you should declare your notice of intent to the other involved agencies, which would include the ZBA and the State Liquor Authority, likely. So, and we can prepare that notice of intent.
Board members, we have, as-
Can I ask a question?
Who's that?
Me.
Yes.
Is this gonna be a coordinated review, or an uncoordinated review, Rick? I don't know how we're gonna get a decision out of the ZBA with, if it's gonna be a coordinated review.
Well, I think the planning board would like a coordinated review.
And we would, we would also recommend a coordinated review.
So we're gonna go to the ZBA, ZBA is not gonna be able to vote on this until you issue a neg, deck under seeker.
Right, we, we go ahead, and we do this from time to time, it gets referred to the ZBA, and the ZBA then can hold their public hearing, can do all the discussion, they just won't have the jurisdiction to act because seeker hasn't been completed. It then gets bounced back to the planning board, who does the seeker, and then it would go back to the ZBA for a vote. And the reason that the board usually does it, obviously the board could decide to do an uncoordinated, which, except in rare instances, this board has not done, and the reason is, is that there may be matters that come up in the environmental review that may well inform the ZBA as to how it may want a condition of variance.
The only comment I'd make here is that this is such a limited need, the impact, we're basically talking where the entrance of this thing's gonna be. It might be easier for, certainly for us to get some certainty if it was done as an uncoord, I don't know how substantial this variance need is in terms of impacting anything else regarding the site plan. You're still gonna have complete control over entrance and everything else, the question is whether we can just simply have it off this one road and not another. I mean, obviously it's better for us if we can get some certainty from the ZBA, but I understand the board, you know, either way, but-
Okay.
It just seems like the type of variance that we're asking for, it doesn't involve bulk requirements, it doesn't involve anything in yours, in the code, other than this one requirement that we come off of a particular road. Not sure that the need for a coordinated, the ZBA's jurisdiction and decision-making is so limited, as the board, that whether you might consider doing an uncoordinated under this- Ask the board that whether you might consider doing an uncoordinated under this one particular circumstance.
Rick, to not do a coordinated review, they can go to the ZBA, put their application in, request the ZBA to be the lead agency for that particular item, then they have to come back to us, and we would have to do seeker on our own. Am I mistaken there, or?
No, before the ZBA has to act, they have to comply with seeker. So they would have to do their seeker. And then if they go through whatever seeker process they want, and then they issue a decision, then this board has to do its seeker with, prior to you making your decision. That's the aspect of uncoordinated review is everybody has to do seeker rather than one lead agency doing seeker.
And whatever the ZBA does, doesn't limit you in any way. You're free to do anything you want under seeker. There's no limitation based on what the ZBA might do.
That's correct.
Yep. Robert, thoughts?
I was just, I had a question other than that. Ice House Road, who maintains that? Who plows it?
Carter.
In case there's like storm damage and so forth?
I don't know who Carter does.
Mr. Pulver explained this to me before. The road, when you come in off of Ice House, you go up a ways, and then you come to a gate. And before, between the entrance and the gate, that's the access for the homes that front on that private road. Mr. Pulver does not use that portion of the road. The gate is there for a reason, he doesn't use it. He comes in off of a driveway, off of a different area. The owners of those lots maintain, they pay for the maintenance, and they maintain the road. They plow it. Mr. Pulver doesn't participate in that because he doesn't use it, he hasn't used it in years. So that's the arrangement that's been made. Apparently, it works just fine. We're going, we have had a preliminary talk as to if the gates opened, if we use this for the winery, how are we going to make arrangements with the property owners? We intend to have, sit down, speak, and come to a suitable arrangement before we come back to you, certainly. And I want to do it before we go to the ZBA. So we will have approached the owners, we will have spoken about it, and they'll be fully aware of what the plan is here, and hopefully, we're going to come to some sort of resolution. Based on what Mr. Pulver is telling me, I suspect that we will come to a satisfactory resolution.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to keep that here before I, it goes out. But based on what he's telling me he's, he wants to do, I don't think it's going to be an issue.
It's too late, you're on camera.
You're on camera.
So you better do it tomorrow morning.
Well, I didn't give the details.
It'll be, it'll be up by tomorrow morning.
I didn't give the details. I just told you I have a secret.
All right, he gave us part of the secret, okay. In regards to the long form or the short form, I mean, right now, we have the short form. At this point, I would say stay with this for right now, with the short form, being that depends, depending on the outcome of the ZBA, then we can always request that it be expanded into the long form, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay. So for right now, not to do extra work, I would say just leave it for right now with the short form, but that's my opinion. I don't know how the board members feel on that, Sandy? With the EAF?
I'm okay with that, but going back to the changing how the board usually does things, I don't, I don't understand, I don't understand why you're asking us to change it.
Well, the reason is, is that we go to the ZBA, we have no certainty. We don't get a vote. So we go to the ZBA, we make our arguments, and then we have to come back here, and we have to prove out, we have to comply with seeker, which is going to be basically us processing the entire subdivision application to get to the point where your consultants are going to pass on this. And that's basically, I mean, the expense is extraordinary, and we have, we still don't have an indication whether we can do this, this project.
But am I misunderstanding, don't you have to do seeker then for both boards?
We do for them, but the seeker review under, for that board is relatively benign.
Yeah, so they're, they want to go to, they want to go through just the ZBA, depending on if they get a yes, a yea or a nay approval. And then, once that outcome from them, then they'll come to us and say, hey, this is what we want, and then we can move forward with our own seeker, which will, usually, we've done it where it's, both boards do it together, applicant proceeds at their own risk, and we move the project along. They don't want to move the project along like that. They want to do one, then two, not together. And that's their choice.
Well, no, no, it's this board's choice as to whether or not to have a coordinated or uncoordinated.
Yeah, that's what they're asking.
But I think that, you know, I mean, the applicant is asking because it believes that it's most expedient for them, and I can understand that. But it's up to this board to decide what they want. I don't think it's quite correct that when the ZBA finishes with the public hearing and their discussion among themselves, and are stopping just short of a vote, that they will have no idea whether or not they're going to get a variance or not. As ZBA's operate, they operate out in public, and their deliberations are out in public. And so it's very clear, in all but the rarest of circumstances, how they're going to vote prior to the actual taking of the vote, because normally, they come up with the discussion, then there's a proposed decision that's based upon the discussion, and then they go ahead and take a vote on the decision. So it's normally pretty clear as to which way they're going to vote. But it's still, you know, there's nothing illegal with them, with you, rather, doing an uncoordinated review and allowing it to go to the ZBA first.
I guess I just don't see why we should-
Can I just say something about that? It's really not a matter of being more expeditious or trying to speed anything up. It's just a matter of financially, that my outlay isn't going to be much larger, and I, if we do it that way, I still may not be approved for the project. This way, at least, I'll know if my only hurdle, this variance, is cleared or not before I go ahead and lay out all that other money. So to me, it's just a financial thing that I would rather be certain before I start laying out money that I cleared that only hurdle.
I've had the experience Mr. Golden has explained. And typically, we, where there's been a coordinated review, I've had to go to the ZBA. I've been given a blessing by the ZBA without a vote, and we've been able to proceed. The only problem is, is if I have a close vote, and who knows? And if a board member leaves, or if a board member retires, or passes, you don't know in the interim. So, you know, you like to think there's some certainty, but there really isn't. And the whole, you know, we're here for a referral to the ZBA. The whole purpose of that is to clear that hurdle, because if we don't, we have nothing. So that's the reason we're asking for the certainty. I just think based on the nature of this particular variance request, it really, it really has nothing to do with the substance of the site plan or the special permit. It's just simply whether a driveway can come off of a particular road or not. So I just think under that, there's kind of that circumstance might allow, might lean in terms of allowing us to get some certainty from the ZBA.
Certainly, traffic issues are different as to whether or not it's on Route 32 or another road. So there will be seeker issues dealing with location of the access.
Well, even if the ZBA granted it, I don't think that would preclude this board from looking into traffic issues.
I'm not saying there would be, but saying that it's, that there's really nothing that that would sort of direct the bus as to how it's going to go with respect to seeker. I don't think it's quite accurate. But it's up to the board.
Okay, Chris?
At what point do we acknowledge lead agency, once it comes back from ZBA?
You would send-
You'd have to do it now.
There's two different ways. One of which is you could actually assume lead agency now, which is what the applicant is asking for, in an uncoordinated review, all right? And then you let them go to the ZBA. The ZBA would likewise assume their own lead agency, and then they could make a determination because as soon as they completed seeker, they'd be able to make a determination. If you do it the way that's normally done here, you would send out a notice of intent, and then the ZBA at its next meeting would presumably say, yes, we defer to you, the planning board, for lead agency. They could continue on with the board irrespective of the non-resolution of seeker at that point, as I said. And they could schedule the public hearing, they could have deliberations on it, just short of the vote. They couldn't do that. Once they sent you back saying they have no problem, and it will presumably be another, it will also include either something from the SLA saying they have no objection, or the 30 days will have lapsed, and then you would assume lead agency if you went that route.
It seems reasonable to me that this is a, I'm in agreement that it doesn't seem to be a huge variance and not the typical one that we deal with, so.
So you're saying uncoordinated?
I would go, I would suggest that.
And you, you are aware, Mr. Myra, when the zoning board meets and they make their determination, they don't sign off on the resolution until the following meeting, which is a month away.
I have direct experience with that one, so.
Okay, so that, so that in that, between that time, if we, as Mr. Golden mentioned, in between that time, we know which way they're going, you'd be back before us, and then we would do, that's why I'm, that's why I'm confused with this uncoordinated review, because we've done this before in the past, where, and I don't see where it's going to cost anymore. All it is, is getting one Secra together, us being a lead agency. And I just don't understand that, and I, I prefer a coordinated review. You know, and that's our decision. Chris said, no, I don't know what Robert wants to do, and it's going to leave us in a quandary here, and I'm going to have to make a decision.
Well, we're, we're just not sure what kind of studies are going to be required. You're going to require, Dennis, you're going to require SWIP before we get a neg deck?
And then I have a question. The nature conservancy abuts this particular portion. They have to be contacted as well for the Secra, right? Is there any, up in the corner of where the vineyard's going to be? Where the building is going to go, there's a nature conservancy up there. Is that, is there any impacts from that?
No, they, they wouldn't have approval power over this project.
Understood, but there's no restrictions?
But no what?
Any restrictions from them with their property, having a winery next to it, or? I'm just asking, I just want to make sure that there's no hidden questions in there, or answers, rather.
I don't know whether or not there is some private agreement with respect to any restrictions. However, that would be a private issue between those parties. This board is not allowed to sort of police and enforce those private restrictions that may exist. So although you can ask for that, because sometimes it's helpful in formulating your planning decisions, you wouldn't be able to enforce it by saying, well, we're not going to allow it because this private restriction says you can't have it.
Because I know it's been about 20 years ago when all this was put together with the subdivision from, with the Rushmore Estate, and I just want to make sure that there's no, and Dennis, you were, you were there.
Right, but the one thing, Marie, you're correct. There is one issue there that was prevalent at the time, I'm sure it is now, and that's the timber rattlesnakes.
Yep.
And there's a fairly large clearing here, so I don't know if they or DEC would want to have anything to say about that for the protection of rattlesnakes, believe it or not.
All right, because this is something that we would know that the ZBA is going to have to review and look into, and I'm not sure if they're going to go that far. Okay, um, which way?
I would prefer the coordinated.
Right now, there's three of us saying we want a coordinated review. I mean, um-
Can I ask one question of Mr. Golden? If it looks like the ZBA is not favorable to this, how do I get a decision out of that board if I want to take exception to that?
Well, I think that, as you know, like any other seeker decision, rarely are they final until some decision is made. So I think if, in fact, that's a, it's a real issue for you, I think at that point in time, you would ask each of the boards to go ahead and revert back to an uncoordinated review to allow you to go ahead and assert your rights with respect to a potential denial. And I would advise this board that that would be a proper thing to do. It really has nothing to do with seeker, and this board's rights would still be protected.
Okay, that's, that's good to know, thank you.
All right, so we have a couple of things here. So for right now, I think most, all of us were in agreement that the short form will stand for right now. Until we, and then a motion to declare this an unlisted action. I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Any further discussion on that?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A motion to have Rick's office prepare the notice of intent to be lead agency and to contact involved, other involved agencies as necessary?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And do we have to make a motion about being a coordinated review, Rick?
Well, you're sending out your notice of intent.
The notice of intent, that's right. I'm sorry, I have four things here. All right. Okay. So we'll get the ball rolling on all this information, and then, and do I, do I have a motion to authorize Dennis to send a letter to the ZBA referring the applicant?
I'll make that motion.
All right, all right. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Any further discussion? The only comment I want to make is that the applicant is aware of any, any and all variances that they may need. It's up to you to go to the ZBA to request it. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. I covered everything? Okay.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Have a good night. Next item on the agenda is Pomona Enterprises. Review and discuss ARB application for proposed single-family home located within the Woodbury Village subdivision. Said property is located at 18 Hudson Point, and is known on the Village Woodbury Tax Service Section 255, Lot 3, Lot 9. Let me get my other folder out. All right, Mr. Lippman, what do you got for us?
Well, I don't have that much for you. I have a copy of the memorandum that Dennis wrote, and which raises some issues that I think we should clear up.
Is the microphone on?
It is, I tried to move it closer, let me do a better job.
Okay.
Do you hear me now?
I can hear you now. Isn't that a phone company? Oops, sorry.
Yes.
Go ahead, you can, you can hold it up, or I have to get a longer neck or something for that.
It's all right. Do you hear me now?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay. I had a number of questions that I didn't know the answers to, particularly the paragraph above A on page one, general background. Are there any real problems there with respect to this application?
If you're questioning me, I'd be happy to answer. Yeah, there's, this is for the board, and this just tells the board that this is one house. This is a application, there have been others previously on this property, on this property, this development. And the board has approved a number of different style homes and size homes. This, and I provided a complete listing of the size of homes here. It's up to the board to determine whether there is any disconnect, whether there is compatibility with the existing homes in the area. And it's possible that a house like this could be larger on a lot-
area, and it's possible that a house like this could be larger on a lot, if, if, for example, let's say you had a secluded lot, which is in a valley, you might have a taller building, and it would be compatible, you might have a large lot, a very large lot, and it would support a larger home, so, but it's up to the board to determine whether this particular house, in this particular configuration, is compatible, and that's under the ARB regulations that the, that are in the code.
I believe that your table in the back of your memo may be missing some of the newer structures that are going up, which are already there, I went through there, it was yesterday, two days ago, two days ago, and I saw homes that were.
Mr. Lippman, I can't hear a word you're saying unless you hold that microphone.
Unfortunately, I, I always like to look at the guy I'm talking to.
I know.
I saw homes there that were easily five, six thousand square feet.
These are, this is the list of homes that I have, which I thought the board approved, if there was another approval that I missed, or something along those lines.
There's maybe five or six of them.
Well, it, there's also, you know, if there are homes going up that aren't approved, then that doesn't.
That's another issue.
Yeah, that doesn't inform the decision-making here.
You just opened up my can of worms, which I've been asking about.
Okay, so, from what I have, this is the list of approved homes, if there was another action, and what I did was I rolled this over, and you can see the revisions along the top, every time there was additional action by the board, I tried to, to record it.
All right, I'm going to make a statement here, just bear with me, what you just stated, and what Dennis has listed here, I was going to ask that because I know for a fact there are other homes up there, which I know, I don't think I've ever seen the plans for them, and they are quite larger than what I would normally have approved from this board, I know I'm getting older and in age here, I may have forgotten, but I don't recall some of these homes and these styles coming before this board, I need that to be looked into, I'm asking the attorney, or I'm asking you, Dennis, I need to know what type of homes are being built up there, I could be mistaken, maybe, like I said, I could have forgotten a home or two that design, because there have been so many of them, but if there are homes that are larger than what Mr. Lippman is telling us just now, we need to know.
Well, I know there have been some changes, for example, some houses that had garages don't have garages, the garages have been enclosed.
Right.
It makes it a bigger house, if you will, it's not a bigger footprint, but there may be other things, so I will talk to Gary.
Thank you, that's another issue, but go ahead, Mr.
Can I address the board a minute?
Who's that?
This is Jack Spade.
Okay.
He's the contractor on his job.
So I, I think that Mr. Lippman meant well, but I think the homes that he's referring to are not, I don't know if they're part of the subdivision or not, but if you go like towards the top of the hill, and you go like around the corner, there's some homes that are newer homes, but they're not recently built, that are larger homes, that's what I sho, I took Mr. Lippman up there, so I drove him further down the block, and you could see a whole bunch of homes like around, as you go around the bend, so they may not be part of this subdivision, but in the, they're in the general area, I think that's what he was referring to.
Well, it's only one subdivision with multiple builders, and, and, and.
I just know what I showed him, not, I, I can't speak for the rest of it, I just know what I showed him, if you, if you drive up around the hill, sort of, and you go past the water tower, there's like an old, you could see the back of like an older street.
Well, yeah, those are adjacent homes, you're talking about houses that were built probably ten years ago, or eight years ago.
Could be, right, right, that's what, that's what Mr. Lippman was referring to, there's some large homes out there.
Okay, but I would still, I would prefer that our engineer do that report and get back to us.
To get back to the point at hand.
Yes, let's go.
Um, we'll take a look into the houses to see, I'll talk to Gary to make sure that everything that's been built up there is, is one of the models you approved, my understanding of the models that have been approved, and if I'm missing something on the table, we should add it to the table.
Yep.
But that's a rather lengthy table, that is the approvals, the dates of the approvals, and what I thought was approved for this, this subdivision, and that provides a range of the square foot of the dwellings, and if you compare that to this, obviously, this is a larger home, there might be reasons for that that the board would find valid, I mentioned that, much larger lot, certain valley areas where it's secluded, there may be reasons, the applicants has the ability to make any, providing information that the board needs to show that these are compatible, but if not, it's, it's your determination as to whether you think, under the ARB regulations that you have, that this is compatible with the surroundings, and what you've previously approved.
I'd also just sort of like to add something to Dennis's comment, as, as you know, Nelson Pope Warhis, your planners, before that it was Turner Miller Group, for many years, we were involved, we would get called to do field checks every time there was clearing for one of the houses in this development, and we haven't been contacted to observe and verify clearing with the original SECR approvals in, in recent years, so, along with this issue that possibly there may be a house that didn't get reviewed, it could be that we've, we weren't contacted to do any of those clearing checks, so, I guess I also want to ask, as part of this, maybe we could work with Dennis to sort of make sure that some of the clearing hasn't slept, crept through the cracks as well, slipped through the cracks, excuse me, wrong cliche.
I can probably tell you it has, but that's just my opinion, but I know there's been prior episodes that have been duly noted with the village and town board, prior meetings.
Can I ask you?
I'm not going to get into that, yes, sir, go for it, what you want to ask.
Is there a, a separate agreement regarding the, the homes that are under construction now, as to how they can get started, or, don't we, we're ARB, don't they all have to come through here unless they're all part of the original?
No, they do, but there are quite a few home models that were approved, if you look at that table on the end there, I don't know, this is thirty years more.
They don't look the same to me, but.
There's quite a few homes there that were approved, the presumption by the board was that one of those models was being built, in one shape or form, some of those models had different variances, one had a porch, another one didn't have a porch, something had a barn door, for a garage door, others had, you know, elevated or a roll-up door, so they had little nuances even off of these models, so I, there were quite a few models, but everything was supposed to be what the board approved, and that's why they're back here, because this is a different house than what you previously approved.
Dennis is going to re, look into that for us before we have a public hearing, just to be clear on it, um, I know we jumped a little bit of place here right now, Mr. Lippman, and, or Jack, are you guys finished with your overall, or do you have anything else to say before I move on down the road here?
Not really, I, I'm anxious to learn whether or not there are serious issues here that we can't accommodate, I thought we could, I thought we could, but there are, there's a large number of them.
Well, this, the one thing that I'm going to have Dennis look into, that doesn't, that doesn't concern you with this application, that's something that he's going to look into for us with other buildings, and he'll get back to us if they're, if we're mistaken, he'll give us an extended list with the square footage, because I'm looking at your application dated, the ARB application dated November twenty-second, we don't have a style name, and we don't have a square footage on here, that's one of my pet peeves, that we don't, that this form is completely, are we going with this name as the style?
So, could I just?
Is this, is this going to be the style of the house?
Yeah, that's exact, the exact rendering of what we want the house to look like.
Okay, but this is the name of it, this is the style of the house, this is what you're going to call it.
No, that's, that's the owner?
Yeah, I mean, that's the, that's my client's name, that's, right.
So your client's name can be the style name?
We could do that, sure.
Okay, and what I need then on this is to be have a revised one, with the style, with his name, with his name there, and I need to know the square footage.
Perfect, so what I did since we got the letter, just to take care of some, I guess, action I just sort of say that I'm able to do, so anything physical, I couldn't address some of the general questions, which I asked Mr. Lippman to help me, but in the meantime, we hired a landscape architect, and we had the architect further along the plans, and we actually brought in, everybody should have a copy here, we actually brought in a plan with an architectural layout, and, on the new architectural plans, it actually gives heights of the building, which can be reviewed, and if we need to fiddle with that, we're happy to fiddle with it.
Unfortunately, our procedure is, we're supposed to receive additional paperwork two weeks before the meeting.
No, we know.
We just only got this today, so we're really not going to discuss what you submitted today.
No, no problem.
Um, so I, I know what you're saying, and I'm sure Mr. Lindsay is going to be going over this back rock wall, because I believe it's a four-on-four, or am I mistaken, not a straight-up, but that's something for you to figure out when you do your report.
We also, just like to dress it up, we, I had the landscape architect add like bushes and trees and shrubbery behind, to try to soften up the whole, you know, view from the back, so we're trying to get it as pleasant as possible, and we're willing to add all sorts of, my client is not, my client wants to satisfy, and my client wants to, wants it to look pretty, wants the neighborhood to look pretty, so if you could look at the, I, you, you will have time, everybody will have time, it's, you know, I brought in like twelve copies, but at some point, if you review it, you'll see that we have a very extensive landscaping plan, which we're hoping will enhance the, the whole area, also, just furthering along, there's a lot, there's, there's some questions with square footage and all that, so we put that very clearly on the plan, on the new architectural plan, we also put all the measurements on the current plan, now, what we try to do with the houses, because, yes, we are aware that there's certain size houses, and we're aware of what's being built there, what we try to do is try to keep the front of the house, for the most part, a similar width and a similar, that similar dimension to the homes that are already being built, and the homes that are currently approved, with regard to dimension, now, the reason my house, our house is larger is because we went deeper, now, we have a very deep lot, our, our lot drops off substantially in the back, way more than any other lot there, and we're trying to work with the lot that we were given, so I'm just bringing everybody up to speed, basically, a client of mine came to me and said, Jack, I love this piece of property, I appreciate the view, and this is incredible, you know, what could you do for me, so we came up with this concept, and we're going to try to further along the concept with, hopefully with the board's help guiding us.
Okay, understood, so.
This morning they came up.
At this point, there's a board members, we, I guess we should go through, Dennis's memo is from December fifteenth, and it's not based on what we were given today.
Correct.
And we have, and I, like you said, I, I tried looking at home, and I know there's the, the heights and everything, is, it's on there, but this landscaping one, I, I know, I'm probably going to, landscaping, I'm going to have Jonathan and Stu's office look at the, but I also, you're going to review the landscaping map, but also Dennis, as I said about the wall, I'm sure, I'll talk to you later about, after our meeting, I have, I'll talk to you gentlemen about all that, but do you want to review, I mean, the applicant has had Dennis's memo, right, you've seen Dennis's memo?
Yes.
All right, do we want to go over this now, Dennis, or do we want?
That's up to you, I'd be happy to, if you want me to give a report like I normally do.
Yeah, what, what, board members, you want them to go over that, because the applicant has, is going to.
Well, is this going to, well.
The same information?
I was going to say, you, you may not be able to answer this, Dennis, because I don't know if you've seen what they brought in today, but is your memo going, going to change substantially based on what we were given today?
Not terribly, because I think what they provided today was clarifications on what they had submitted before, trying to give heights, they tried to show in that landscaping plan, how they're going to dress it up, where the, how the walls go into the site, so you can see better, so I don't think it changes some of the comments, I don't believe they've changed the size of the building that dramatically in terms of its footprint, and that's an issue you're going to have to deal with, and the visual, the visual impacts of the rear of the building down to the valley and to the view corridors are there, they're, one of the things I talked about is whether they could soften that, that's what they're trying to do, but that's something you're going to have to be concerned with if this is the application that's before you, and I don't think it's changed that dramatically.
But can I, can I ask one question, because I obviously haven't been on the board since this began, did the HOA come into this at all, was the HOA supposed to have any authority as far as types of homes, or build it, the buildings, because I know in some of the other relatively new, newer developments, the HOA has to give approval for certain things first.
Whether they establish their own ARB review, I mean, I know that in a, a community that I'm involved with, there's an ARC committee, it's an architectural review committee, so if you want to do something to your property, it has to go before the ARC committee, the initial construction of the homes, I haven't seen it that way, I don't know what the bylaws say, I can't say, maybe Rick can talk to that too, whether they have authority, but so far, all of the applications that have been before you for ARB have been within the board's authority, and the board has acted on those applications.
And that's also because this is a ridge preservation location, I've, I've taken your thunder away from you, Rick.
Well, that's part of the criteria, that's part of the criteria of the view, but the question is, who reviews it, is it the HOA, or this planning board, thus far, it's been the planning board, planning boards reviewed that. Now, after it's established, and these homes are built, if the HOA establishes its, its own group within, within the Woodbury Villas, WP3, and they establish that based on their HOA, to have some review authority over modifications to homes, that's something that they may be able to do, I don't know, I know other associations do that.
So, but, so when this was originally approved, nothing was, there was no input as far as the bylaws, or the, the HOA, or anything?
No, as, as far as I know.
I've been on this from day one, but go ahead, Rick.
Just saying, there's nothing in the HOA agreement that can cabin this board's jurisdiction with respect to what it has authority to approve, so, if they want to approve the fact that you can have certain types of doorknobs, or doorknockers, or certain things like that, that maybe they can knock themselves out with respect to that, but if something is subject to ridge preservation, they have to get an approval from this board, and it, and an HOA can't trump that.
I mean, it's, we've gone as far, when we, when this was first approved, they'll have to have the same mailboxes, that's, we were so consistent with what, we, we went through great lengths when this was before the board originally, and every time another developer came in, we went through all their plans, and, I mean, I don't know how many times they've been before, how many developers have been before this board, but they've, I've seen their plans, and that's why I'm confused, as I said earlier, about other styles of home, which I don't recall, so there's different things that, they're supposed to come before us, in my opinion, as Rick said, but enough said.
Dennis is going to look into it, and will compile the final list, which may even be the list that he has, or it may be a modified list, but that's the list that you'll be working on with respect to similarity and other criteria, not something that was not built with your approval.
So what do we need to do tonight?
What do we need to do tonight, we need our engineer to, and our landscaper, and our planner, and our attorney, they need to review what was given to us today, we can set a public hearing without having our engineers' reports before us on the, on these new plans, especially with the landscaping and the design of the home, we can, we can discuss it before we open it to the public, we don't have any samples here tonight, usually we have samples before we set a public hearing, and, so I don't, this, this may require another meeting before we can set a public hearing.
I'm, we're not proposing that we get accelerated.
Okay.
Results, we're interested in doing the right thing.
Right, so at this point, usually we would go into a, have a, setting a public hearing, but I think we have to have another meeting in between.
Yeah, I, I don't think this application is ready for a public hearing, based upon your, your prior practice, there is a lot of information that needs to be given with respect to ridge preservation requirements under the code, that I understand is, has not been submitted, and, so I, I think you ought to wait for that, because you want to have the public being able to have, be informed about what is the impact with respect to ridge preservation, so that they can make informed comments at the public hearing.
Okay.
You can take your initial SECR step if you want to, it's a very tiny baby step, because, as we have previously advised you, ARB is not an action under SECR, but the ridge preservation is, but it's in relation to a single-family home, and therefore it's a type-two action, so the board could simply note for the record that this is a type-two action under SECR.
Okay. With that being said, a law for a motion that we declared as a type-two action, do I have a second?
I second it.
Any further discussion on this request? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, so that's the first step, so we did a type-two action, being that we were given all the plans today, Dennis, we could possibly, when is our next meeting, just throw me some dates.
It's the first week in February, I think there's an extra week here, so February seventh, is it? Yeah.
Right, I thought it was late, I mean.
They have another week to get materials in, however, in, typically at a stage like this, the function of the board, as I've seen it in the past, is to determine whether you have sufficient information, as Rick said, to go to the public, so that you can get input from the public, you have an information that you can make a decision on, and the public can come in and can opine, and have a full. and can opine and have a full envelope, a full, full information. And we've identified in here a number of things that we think are necessary, so that you would have that information. The, the palette of colors, the materials, the things like that, because visual impacts are significant in terms of your review requirements under ridge preservation and ARB. They're compatible, but they are, they are somewhat different. I went down through the specific criteria in your code, in, in the memo, on ridge preservation, and noted some, besides the size of the structure, noted some other areas where you need information, so that you can make a determination. And in terms of ARB, we talked about the renderings, we talked about the retaining walls, all those things. They provided some information on there on the retaining walls, so you can know visually what they're going to look like, which is important, because they are features. Also, this structure, it meets the code requirement, from what I can see, from what I saw before, and they've clarified that in the new materials. I did take a look at that. The roof height would meet the requirements, because roof height is measured from the approaching angle of a fire truck. It's on the street side. So, there's two sides. The front clearly makes, makes the grade, if you will, and satisfies your code. The side is somewhat questionable. I think it's okay, but I wanna refer it to Gary, because there is a retaining wall in there. And if you measure it in one area, it's non-compliant. If you measure it in another area, it is complying. The preponderance of that side is complying. So, I wanna see how Gary interprets that. He may say, no, any non-compliance is non-compliance. So, they might have to change their, their design or change their retaining wall, which I think they probably could do to avoid ZBA action, but maybe not. So, that's something that needs to be clarified. Before you set a public hearing, I think we ought to have those determinations, those decisions.
Well, I wasn't going for a public hearing.
Well, I just, I'm just suggesting where, where I think you are, okay?
Yeah.
And so, I think that Mr. Lippman had some questions on here. I think they ought to, on their side, try to take a look at the memo and what we prepared. Look at the questions, do their best to, to be responsive. And once you have all the information in front of you and you think it's appropriate, then you can set a public hearing.
Also, just to, to, to add, emphasize something that Dennis hasn't mentioned. In his memo, he requested the sketch or model, modeling look of how the project would look from the view corridors, from Route 6 and so forth. And that's on, right before number two on, on the memo. I think that's particularly important piece of information that you're gonna need for the public hearing, is how is this gonna look from, from the view corridors?
But we did that in the original...
SEACR.
SEACR.
That's true.
Not for this size house.
But not, not for this size house in this spot.
Oh, for this size house, okay, for the... All right. What is the square footage? Just so I have an idea. What, what's the number?
It's about 6,000 square feet.
All right, so that's just about double...
That's to, that's total.
Correct. Not basement. We're not counting the basement. We're not finishing the basement.
Okay, but if you, what is it with the basement?
It would probably be another 3,000 square feet.
So, 9,000.
Right.
All right, so then what I would need you to do on this, when you redo this?
Fill that all in.
Put unfinished basement.
Right. I think in all the plans that we did get, the basements are never counted. And so, the plans that we got, they don't, never count the basement, you know, the square footage.
Yeah, I get the bad question right here.
Look, the point, the point of us trying to come here tonight, we asked for the meeting tonight, right? The point was, is we got back this list, and the point was just to try to get as much clarification from the board and from the, the board's professionals, so we could make our adjustments and try to come back with something acceptable. So, the more feedback we get now, and maybe I could request, do you guys do like a CDSC that we could sit down maybe and kind of review this? Is there something we could do?
There's a specific question, and, you know, we'll try to answer your questions. But it's done before the board, usually. I mean, my comments there are before the board. The issue that we have, and we, we try to avoid, is sidebar discussions to make independent decisions, which the board is not involved with. So, this is a report to the board. If there's a question on that, you can answer, ask it here. We'll try to address it the best we can. A lot of this is open-ended, where you're gonna have to try to make some decisions as to what your application should, should present.
We, we just, we ran into some issue that we felt that some of it, maybe it wasn't clear enough that we even knew which way to go. That's why we...
And maybe you can identify those, and we'll try to address them. You have any problem with that, Alan?
We'll identify them and we'll let you know.
Okay.
I'm sure, Mr. Lippman's been around the block a few times. He knows what's going on. No disrespect.
Thank you.
So, I guess until we hear back from you with all, you have, you have some of our, you have Dennis's review. You're gonna be getting additional reports from everyone involved once, because I, the landscaping, planting is gonna be reviewed now by our planner, and then we'll come together with their reports. They'll send them to you, and you'll go back and forth with the reports.
Maria, if I could ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Does the applicant, does the applicant want us to respond to the most recent submission? Or do you wanna have a chance to take a look at that further, based on the conversations, and make another submission?
I only saw it tonight.
Yeah, you might wanna take a look at things, because it looks like you were trying to get something in for today.
True.
And it may not have been as complete as you want, so rather than, because every time there's a report, it's something the board has to review. It's additional cost to you. I think you should probably try to get your application as complete as you can. Let us know that, that's what you wanna present, and then we'll give a report on that for the board.
Very good.
They have to get that in.
Very good.
They'd have to get that in, in a week if they wanna be on the meeting on February 7th. There's no guarantee you'll be on that meeting. It depends on the agenda. You need to get it in two weeks before whatever meeting, and usually, the first and the third Wednesdays of the month.
That is.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
And the only request I'm gonna ask for, if you revise any of these, only the engineers need to have the large sets. I don't know of the board members. We, we don't usually, we usually get smaller sets.
That's a lot of trees we were cutting for that.
I know you were, because I just threw out the other one. So, you know, I, as a board member, we usually get, and I know the board, we, we usually get smaller scale.
Okay, I can do that.
Like even half the size.
We brought in 12 of those today.
I know.